Please take your seats, the session begins. Hello, dear colleagues. By initiative of the deputies of the parliament, we have invited an extraordinary session with one question on the agenda. On the condemnation of the Azeri aggression against Arzakh on September 27. Please register. Hundred and ten registered. There is quorum, we can start, dear colleagues. I suggest to, before starting the session, honor the soldiers who got killed in the field, the battlefield. Thank you. The main rapporteur, Radmir Zoyan, Speaker of the Parliament. Dear deputies, first, I would like to emphasize that the statement I am going to present was authored by three factions of the parliament. It has been circulated by the leader of my step, Makounz, the prosperous Armenian and luminous Armenian factions. It's no secret that this statement can be considered to be cited on behalf of all the deputies. I will only reason draft statement. The statement of the Parliament of Armenia on the military aggression unleashed by Azerbaijan against Arzakh. The Parliament of Armenia strictly condemns the aggression unleashed by Azerbaijan against Arzakh Republic and large-scale military offensive whereby it violated the principle of solving conflicts by peaceful ways. Using heavy artillery against peaceful settlements, targeting indiscriminate assaults against civilian infrastructure, previous Tavush aggression in July, anti-Armenian rhetoric which are aimed at depopulation of Armenians of Arzakh, proves yet another time that Azerbaijan is a threat to Arzakh, to the entire Armenian people, to their entire regional security. Hence, the self-defensive actions of Armenian forces are aimed at the neutralization of this threat. Military activities against civilians, the elderly and children is prohibited only by international law, but in all civilizations, religions, the international community must take active steps to deter not only the Azeri aggression, but also the aggression of its ally, Turkey, which gets involved in Arzakh conflict, which will result in extreme destabilization of regional peace and international security. Obvious Turkish support to this Azeri adventure is a brutal violation of international law which must be condemned by the international community. We demand to call a spade a spade and to clearly state the aggression by dictatorial Azerbaijan against democratic Arzakh. The Parliament of Armenia reaffirms that the Armenian party has always been true to the peaceful resolution of the conflict under the Minsk group. At the same time, being guarantor of Arzakh security, Armenia will take all the necessary means to protect the security of Arzakh Armenians and their self-determination. This is the statement which I suggest to adopt unanimously. Registration for questions. Please register for exchange of opinions. Thank you. Dear Chairman, dear colleagues and compatriots, it's been more than one day since the neighboring country launched military activities violating all human rights norms. I would like to voice one simple reality which will become also an important statement for the international community. We are special because every member of this nation is a soldier and they know what is the important mission of protecting one's mother. And dear colleagues, the reality in this region and particularly the large-scale military activities of Azerbaijan more than ever require from us to say that this country cannot guarantee the security of Arzakh and Arzakh people. These activities are not negotiable. We more than ever are firm and we shall not allow to diminish, belittle the right of Arzakh to live in freedom. I bow to all the courageous soldiers who have been defending our border for more than a day. And I call on the international community and all the relevant bodies to take clear steps against the country which targets settlements, which bombards communications. Thank you. Tatevik Ayropetan, before Ms. Ayropetan approaches, dear colleagues and compatriots. Yesterday and today, the sessions of the parliament are translated simultaneously into Russian and English and our foreign colleagues can learn about it. Chair, colleagues, compatriots. In fact, for two days Azerbaijan has unleashed an aggression against Arzakh, threatening the existence of Arzakh. And when I heard the term "struggle for survival", I knew that it was a struggle for survival and we have nowhere to retreat. We have only one thing to do to be consolidated and to win glory and glory to those who laid their lives on the altar of freedom. I express my condolences to the families of the perished. The situation is aggravated by Turkey, which supports Azerbaijan. Nevertheless, will win and the attempts to eliminate us will fail and will have grave consequences for those who perpetrate that. Although the problem is solved in the battlefield thanks to the courage of our soldiers, it's important to deliver to the international platforms and to demonstrate to the entire world the fascist essence of Azerbaijan and Turkey. That's why I call on the ambassadors and diplomats in different capitals. You perform an important mission and you are the rear of the Armenian soldier. You follow the justice and the just struggle of our people. This is a signature of genocide and must be properly condemned by international community. Your work is no less important. You hold our external front and we must deliver the message and present the truth about this aggression unleashed by the dictatorial leader who heroized the one who killed somebody who was asleep. Dear colleagues, dear citizens, one of two Sichuan losses was a woman, Hasmic. There is no hard and dangerous work for the Armenian woman. I am ready at the moment go to the frontline, but not to inspire soldiers, but to fight. It seems the mission of the woman is peace. No. In our case, we all know that peace cannot be begged or demanded. One shall make people, force people to ensure peace. The Armenian woman oftentimes takes arms and fires accurately. I call on Armenian mothers to be strong because indeed our fate is to be cold-hearted. We shall continue sharing the defense of this country with our men and we have no other way. It is the same thing as happened all the times. Armenia will not go somewhere else. Our neighbors won't change. We shall consider this and economically strengthen this country because the world is changing. And after this victory, we must induce the enemy to keep distance from Arzakh and our borders. We women have a lot to do. We shall not be clad in black. We shall be courageous in this period of our history. Dear Supreme Commander, please take into account my request. Draft me whenever it is necessary and if this is this moment, then at this moment, draft me as a follower of Queen Perandzem as the Armenian citizen who couldn't donate a child to the country but who has duties towards this country. I'm more than sure that my freedom fighter father is smiling in heaven. Long live Republic of Armenia, long live Arzakh and will prevail. Dear Speaker, dear colleagues, as we know, back in July 12th when the Azeri army conducted subversive actions against the Armenian state border and now has launched large-scale war along the length of the border of Arzakh. From the very first day, the Turkish authorities spread a statement that they support Azerbaijan and will always be beside them. The Turkish authorities obviously announce that Kurdish parties must be destroyed along with the Kurdish people. And today, there is genocide committed against our people. Two days ago, the Turkish procurer's general arrested eighty-two members of the Kurdish party, including the mayor of Kars, saying that six years ago they supported the Kurds in the Syrian city of Koban, where Kurds were eliminated. We condemn the Turkish authorities and this subversive act of Azerbaijan and at the same time, we support the Armenian people and will be always beside it. Taking into account the fact that the Turkish authorities have launched genocide against the Kurds and hundred years ago, the same genocide was committed against the Armenian people, I call on my Kurdish compatriots of Turkey, Iraq and Syria to support the Armenian people, to confront the Turkish and Azeri intentions. The National Assembly of the Republic of Armenia strongly condemns the military aggression and large-scale armed attack unleashed by the Republic of Azerbaijan against the Republic of Arzakh in the morning of September 27, 2020, which grossly violated the principle of resolving international disputes exclusively by peaceful means. These criminal actions by the military political leadership of Azerbaijan, including the targeting of peaceful settlements with large-caliber weapons, indiscriminatory attacks on civilians and civilian infrastructure, as well as the previous aggression in Tavush in July 2020, constant belligerent and anti-Armenian rhetoric aimed at the eviction of Armenians from Arzakh once again prove that the Azerbaijani government is a real threat to the existence of the Armenians of Arzakh, the security of Arzakh Republic and Republic of Armenia, the whole Armenian nation, as well as the security of the whole region. Therefore, all self-defense operations carried out by the Armenian armed forces are aimed at the neutralization of this danger. Military actions against the civilian population, the elderly children, women, are prohibited not only by the international law, but in all civilizations, all world religions and confessions. The international community must take active measures to restrain Azerbaijani aggression as well as Turkish continuous aspirations to intervene in the Nagorno-Karabakh conflict that will lead to extreme destabilization in the region, posing a direct threat to international peace and security. Such kind of adventurism by Azerbaijan carried out with the apparent support of Turkey is a gross violation of international law which must receive the targeted legal political assessment by the international community. We urge our international partners to unequivocally condemn this aggression of the authoritarian Azerbaijan against democratic Arzakh and call on international community to draw a distinction between hatred and humanity. The National Assembly of the Republic of Armenia reaffirms that the Armenian side remains committed to the peaceful settlement of the conflict within the framework of the OSCE Minsk group co-chairs. At the same time, as the guarantor of the security of the Arzakh Republic, Armenia will not hesitate to take all the necessary measures to protect the security of the Arzakh Armenians as well as the expression of their will for self-determination. Will continue to advise you about the aggression unleashed by Azerbaijan. At the same time, it's necessary to double our efforts to deliver information accurately and in a targeted way. I wish courage to the fighters and consolidation for those who work in the rear so that we can be worthy of what we are worthy. Enough is enough, we are going to win. Dear Speaker, deputies, the people of Armenia and Arzakh, today, we are going to adopt a special statement addressed to the international community. I want to say the following, that when there is no targeted criticism of genocidal activities of Azerbaijan, such aggressions happen. I want to say that according to all international conventions, against all international human rights convention, civilian population is targeted. What else is necessary for the international community to make a statement? We are going to work by all diplomatic channels to deliver the truth to the international community, but the most important thing here is to be abreast with our fighting forces and to properly manage information. This war is going to take long and it will be disastrous and we must be consolidated and every day, we must be beside our armed forces. Only in this case, we'll be able to talk to the international community. Only in this case, it will be possible to win. I'm sure in all the important centers of the world, information has been spread about the preparation of the Azeri aggression. Any observer could notice that and I'm sure that certain centers knew about it and now they're waiting for the outcome. I want to assure you that this outcome will be victorious. Thank you. Dear colleagues, dear Chairman, I want to appeal to the ethnic minorities of Azerbaijan, lesbians, Taliş, the Awa. This is not your war. Open and see the names of the victims, losses already in place. It's mostly your representatives. Ask yourself why the fascist regime of Aliyev drives you to the frontline. Those who have been living with us side by side for centuries do not allow Azerbaijan and Turkish fascism use you and your children's lives for their cannibalistic policies. Save your children, remove them from Azerbaijan. Sabotage the criminal, Aliyev's regime's orders. Once again, this is not your war. You are sent to obliteration in the Armenian highlands of Karabakh, but I want to warn you that no matter who is armed on the Armenian and Arzakh soil, will be destroyed. I call on you, save the lives of your children. Evacuate them. I want to remind you also, just ask yourself why today in Azerbaijan civil aviation flights are prohibited? To prevent you from avoiding these attempts to make you cohorts and accomplices to the crimes they are committing now. Glory to the Armenian army. Dear colleagues, dear compatriots, the war unleashed by Azerbaijan must be condemned and deterred by the international community. If we speak of priorities, there are three basic principles where we shall perform functions. First, military resistance, internal consolidation and influence on the public opinion in the international community. We shall present facts to the civilized world about the activities that are underway. As parliamentarians and MPs, regardless of political views... As parliamentarians and MPs, regardless of political views and factions, we send letters to our colleagues in different inter-parliamentary groups and through phone calls and we understand that there will be answers. But we shall do much more for deterrence. The joint Turkish-Azeri large-scale provocation must be known by the international community that a few minutes before the war, the Turkish Haber TV channel presented to the international community that the Armenian party unleashed a war. These are facts that we must share with the international community. The time has come for mutual assistance. It will be military, political alliance and de facto recognition of Artsakh with all the responsibilities. Dear compatriots, our team has always attached great importance to the stability of the state, to the stability of the morale of the soldiers. We are ready to demonstrate that. Hayastan, Artsakh and Daspur must be more than consolidated, must be organized to celebrate a permanent victory. Yes, we are going to win. Dear Speaker, dear colleagues, compatriots, the aggression adventure unleashed by Azerbaijan apparently has a tendency to become the Sardarabad Battle of the 21st century. As in the 20th century, in nineteen eighteen, in May, the Armenian nation faced the problem to prove its right to survive. Today, our enemies make us once again to find an answer to this question and the answer must be very powerful. Thanks to Sardarabad Battle, we have statehood, something our predecessors dreamed for generations. But the difference is that we have statehood, it's an important acquisition and statehood means organization on another level. Hence, I request all my compatriots, understanding the seriousness of this moment, to consolidate around the Armenian statehood. Everyone in his behavior, following the rules of the pandemic, coordinating individual initiatives to confront in an organized way the adventure of the dictator and the only purpose is not to, who wants, not just to occupy Artsakh, but to save his skin. Dear Chairman, dear colleagues, this year we celebrate the seventy-fifth anniversary of the United Nations. Why the UN was established for several purposes. First, the UN Charter prohibited using force as a threat. Secondly, the UN prohibited using force and stated that all disputes must be resolved peacefully. The UN stipulated that all small and big nations are equally equal and have the right to self-determination and stipulated the criteria of a state to become a UN member. Article four of the UN Charter says that any state can become a UN member, which is peaceful, who can take duties under this charter and is willing to perform these duties. Dear colleagues, today, Turkey and Azerbaijan are two states which are not peaceful, which are not capable of performing their duties and they are not willing to do so. Turkey and Azerbaijan's policy is a direct threat to international peace and security. I can't help speaking about the crimes, military crimes committed today as a result of the Azeri aggression. I want to remind you that war crimes have no statutes of limitation. The persons who committed such crimes will be permanently condemned, not only in Armenia, but in any civilized country. I must remind you the Nuremberg Trial and Benjamin Ferenc's words, who said that the Nazi crime criminal is heavily ill and cannot come. And he said, if he is capable of hearing and breathing, I can indict him. Benjamin Ferenc is celebrating his hundredth anniversary. I want to remove the mask because I want to be heard and seen. Remember, whenever, wherever it happens, new Benjamin Ferenc will come after you and any criminal war crime will be condemned. There is no other option or solution. This is this struggle for humanity against hatred. Dear colleagues, I would like to make a proposal concerning the statement in the fourth paragraph when we appeal to the international community to strictly condemn the Azeri aggression and Turkish large-scale assistance. I suggest, and it's not seen in the statement, why don't we appeal to our strategic partners? We don't see if we have any strategic partners. If we speak about Turkey, where is our strategic partnership? Why not appeal to the strategic partners? We have been demanding on international platforms to be politically and legally condemned. And now it's high time we, it was voiced by different delegation members and MPs. Isn't it time to apply to our strategic partners to respond with condemnation? Apply to them because it's one matter, the co-chairs, and another matter is recognition of Artsakh and political military alliance. We must know the balance where the activity of the chairmanship, co-chairmanship does not conflict the recognition. It is not necessary for the stereotypes to remain for fifty years. So it's good to appeal to the international community, but we have strategic partners and we have mutual duties with them. Dear Speaker, dear colleagues, as the second minister of Daspur and Chair of the Standing Commission for the Daspur, I want to appeal to our Daspur compatriots. It's no secret that we are alone against the armies of two states. Hence, the question arises, what's going to be the proof of victory in this? I think participation of ten million Armenians in this war. Dear compatriots, regardless of where you live, dear compatriots, regardless of your last names ending I A N or not, if you consider yourself Armenia, then every one of you must be a leader in this war. Dear compatriots, if you are willing to come to Armenia and stand beside the Armenian soldier, then find a way to come here. We need you. If for some reasons you want to stay where you are but to participate in the war, then you can be leaders of this war in your countries. If you want to support us financially, you can use the Hayastan Foundation account. If you want to present the truth to the world to prove that our struggle is just, then embark on this work. This war must be on the agenda of ten million Armenians worldwide and as an universal nation, we must understand that this is an absolutely different type of war against a different type of enemy. That's why the only way to win, as I say, is that Armenians, your only salvation is in your collective force. I call on all Armenian potential to consolidate, to become consolidated for one sacred purpose, that is, final victory, which the senior generation delegated to us. Thank you. Dear colleagues, we'll start in a vote in a few speeches. Sofiho Sipian, let me start by thanking the Armenian army and the soldiers who have been fighting tooth and nail for two days on the borders. The Artsakh people and Artsakh have the right for self-determination and we support it. We shall not hope for international structures because history proved that we cannot eat using a paper ladle. We need an iron ladle. I want to call to the world that for the second times, Turkey has been condemned when in nineteen fifteen, a whole nation was subjected to genocide. And now we cannot apply to Turkey using just words. We shall become sober and we cannot achieve anything just by text. This is a challenge to all of us. And if it's a friendship group, then friendship is not just by words, but deeds. If it's a decision, we decided to win regardless of whatever the world decides. The Armenian soldier is standing on the border and the Armenian people are in the rear and we will win.
Distinguished speaker, colleagues, compatriots. Unfortunately, in the world, the policymakers continue to keep their eyes and ears closed despite what they see. But yet it is evident that this war is a war of civilization and values and for those that come into war. Of course, the policy and politics has the rules written or not written and the daily lexicology, but the war newlyfies them and it makes us call the things with their own names and without taking into consideration that we have to state that both France and that those that claim to be our strategic partners do not care and also do not care the human rights people. And while in other parts of the world, condemning statements are being issued, yet our soldiers are fallen and they are fallen on the shelling and because of them. And if Azerbaijan legitimizes a genocide, that we in Armenia and in Artsakh, we've claimed our rights to live through the lives of our civilian population and our soldiers and we will implement this right to law despite what is being cooked in the political cuisine of the world. We will design our politics together with the toolbox of the world, of the world that is yet ready to condemn the people killing. Of course, the politics has its rules written or unwritten and its lexicology, but yet we have to use the right names of the world. We will win in this war and the truth will win and despite the double standards. The Armenian army is fighting based on the only principle and the right for truth. And glory to the Armenian army and God save Artsakh and Armenia. Thank you. Dear colleagues and dear Chairman, I've been thinking whether to speak or not because speaking about war for me is a double cruelty because I've spent my childhood under the bombing and fire. I've seen all the Azerbaijani actions during my school years and I will yet use this opportunity to speak from here and address my beloved compatriots from Gharqunik region and Chambarak. I would like to just leave anew and we've seen all this and we've seen the bombing of our houses and important objects and we've seen too many mines blowing up in the fields and we've collected all those mines and yet we
and yet, we grew grain on those fields and survived. I want to remind something to... I believe that my friends of the same age will remember us being afraid from the sound of planes and helicopters because it was associated with the war. Yet, we shall not panic because we've seen also the liberation of Karvachar. We've obtained this victory through our own efforts. So I would like us to stay in our position with a strong sense of dignity. I do not want us to be afraid of this war and suddenly thinking about changing our settlements. No, we shall stay, and we shall protect Artakh. Thank you. And I would like to wish power to our army and to announce that we will win. Thank you. Haig Kudiren.
Honorable speaker, honorable parliament, and colleagues, I have lots to say, but very limited time, so I will try to speak short with a couple of thesis. The war makes us all dive into the daily rhythm and routine rhythm, and sometimes, despite of our own will to just divert from the perspectives. I'd like to suggest to take some time, some pause, and just to consider all those challenges standing in front of us. Dear compatriots, at least during the several hundred years, the Armenian people has been standing, has been facing the threat of existential survival. And every time, the success of the victory of the Armenian people or sometimes the losing, the reasons for losing these fights were because of the unduly and not timely actions. So this formula helps every nation to solve its long-lasting existential problem. What are those components? According to Mysl, we used to have military forces. There were times that registered success in the military field, but unfortunately, we failed to have a due diplomacy that would help us to get supported in the world. But at the same time, there were times when we had good diplomacy but poor military forces to fight in the field for our liberty. But there were also times when we had strong army, but we have some internal disputes that finally became the threat for the all-nationwide existential problem. And at the same time, we also had the nationwide disputes that resulted in the existential problems. According to me, during the recent 700 years, this is the very first time, we are the very first historical generation that have all those new preconditions to get this formula right. We have the strong army, we have all the diplomatic institutes, we have a consolidated political parties, and we have the nationwide conscience. And the Armenian people, in the first time in its 700 years history, has all the necessary components to get this formula. And so, we have no right to lose. Dear soldiers, dear officers, you are not simply officers and soldiers of Armenia today. You are those who continue the 1,000-year rule. So you are that iron spoon that has been mentioned by Hriman Haydik. Dear diplomats, you are not simple diplomats today. You are the diplomats with this needed, strongly needed iron spoon. Dear parliament, we are not a simply parliament with a regular session. We are the parliament that has been desired for so long by our political elite and that have been desired so much to get established. And dear politicians, you are not simple politicians. You again are the participants of this 1,000-year that the Hovsep Amin has been looking forward to formulate, to get this formula that would allow our nation to solve this existential safety problem. Today's fight is not a simple fight. This is this hysterical momentum when we shall formulate and ensure the existential security of the Armenian people. I would like to finalize my words quoting the Armenian poetry. "We came since ages, and we are moving, advancing with victory towards a bright future." Nayra Zohraben.
Thank you, dear chairman, dear parliament, dear colleagues. Once again, I would like to bring into the agenda the recognition of Artakh's independence. Today, there are no negotiations, and we might be sure, can be sure that tomorrow we won't have them. So what prevents us from carrying out those negotiations? The international community, which particular international community? Is it the same community that during the April War, when I was showing them the videos of violence, soldier bodies? They were looking into my eyes, saying, yes, we are very sorry, but my coffee is waiting for me. So which particular community, international community? The international community, when with all the facts on the table, three, once in three, every three minutes, Medjutav Shoglan is posting on Twitter, speak directly, evidencing their involvement. The representative of the political elite of one of the largest NATO army? Which particular international community we are speaking? Can you imagine how difficult it was for me, working in the European structures, looking in the face of my mother, of the mother of the fallen soldier, asking, claiming, please tell me that the body of my son was not violented? And I was telling a lion, saying, no, you can rest assured. But I believe that it is the moral duty of everyone today to organize the closed session of the parliament, to discuss all the arguments that could be today limiting us to recognize the independence of Artakh. I believe this is our moral duty, and we must do it even more. I am convinced that that will be the limiting mechanism. As regarding the international community, I believe there is no other opinion. We've always been with naked hands, and we've always been hoping for our own efforts. Thank you. Before he approaches, I would like to say that apart from those registered on the board, there are another three colleagues registered, which is not reflected on the board. Thank you.
Dear speaker, dear colleagues, since yesterday, the military commissaries are overcrowded, and the staff cannot easily manage all those people that who wish to leave for the front line because the lawyer forgot about being a lawyer, the singer forgot about being a singer. So all the people, just they quit their majors, and they became soldiers, soldiers ready to leave for the front line and standing next to the drafted soldiers. Azerbaijan wants to win over the people that 30 years ago, in impossible conditions, has gained the impossible victory. Azerbaijan is fighting against the society which carries the democratic values and has already proved its victory through the democracy. And I want to mention that this is the war between the democracy and dictatorship, and the civilized world shall provide its assessment in this particular context. Because Armenia, Republic of Armenia and Republic of Artakh, being the part of the civilized world, are at war with a country with people that show no mercy or shows no respect towards the commitment undertaken by the international treaties. This war, dear colleagues, will resolve our 1,000-year future. And I want to state that this is the most important anchor after which we shall start anew. God protect our country, our people, and our glorious army. Rostam Bakoyan.
My beloved Armenians, we, the Yazidis and Armenians, are two nations, but one people. The Yazidi community has always been standing and is standing today next to the Armenian people. Today, unfortunately, we have two Yazidis soldiers wounded once. One has a heavy, is heavily wounded, while the others is not. Yesterday, in Aknelich, which is the sacred place for the Yazidi community, we've established a Yazidi brigade. And today, we are ready to leave to Artakh to protect our general frontier and like we did in the April four-day war. And this is the land of Temur Karam, Sedar Boris, and sacred by their blood. And we Yazidis will not allow that. One day, the enemies happen to be here. We fight for this land through our blood, and today, we are ready to continue our fighting. And today, on the border, the Yazidis soldiers are standing next to their Armenian brothers and fighting together against our general common enemy. I must state that since yesterday, lots of Yazidis did not wait for the formulation of the Yazidi brigade, and they are already in Artakh today. At the price of our own lives, we fought in the Stadarabat and Bashabaran battles and in the Artakh fights, when we had 40 fallen. And in the April War, where Hamlet Sedar Karam were fallen. And today, we will not give a single step back. We are with our faces towards Artakh. We have no alternative path. And we've always been standing together with you. And today, again, once again, we prove our brotherhood and the loyal brotherhood. And today, we shall be united, fighting together. In Artakh, we shall expand the safety zone. Our only path is to expand the safety zone, and the enemy shall know, must know about that. In Azerbaijan, as compared to the Azerbaijan minorities, where they impose the representatives of the national minorities, the 30% of the population, to go to the front line, the Les Gis and Talish. In Armenia, we voluntary wish to protect our sacred land, our motherhood, every sentiment which is sacred for all Yazidis. Beloved soldiers and officers, we are next to you. You are strong, we are strong, we will win, and we are winning. Thank you.
Dear compatriots, today, when we proved that actually there is no such republic as the Azerbaijan Republic, actually, this is only the country manipulated by Turkey. And today, Turkey opening up its real face and covering its real face has initiated the direct war against Armenia. It used to be indirect before, today, it's a direct war. Exactly 100 years ago, in 1920, September, Turkey again initiated war against Armenia, which has been the most important fact in the first republic of Armenia. Today, again, we are facing the similar situation, trying to bring into life the ideas of Pan-Tukeyism. So this shall be at least very concerning for the international community. Dear compatriots, Turkey again has opened up its sword, has taken out its sword against Armenians. Muşer Kalshoyan from Sassoon, surviving from the genocide, being the son of the survival, was saying the difference between Azkar and the soldier, saying that Azkar will kill people while the soldier will protect the world. He was also saying that losing the land can be recovered. During the Artakh War, we proved that we can't bring this land back until Armenians are living and breathing, the same way we will be.
way we will be bringing by Ganzag and western Armenian lands, Akhijevan, and also the sacred mountain. The human loss cannot be recovered. Today we have victims, we have fallen soldiers, our best young soldiers are falling, and who are the core of their families. And I would like to sum up with pleasant information. For me, I received information from Jabakh, that the young people are being registered, ready to leave to Artaxh, to fight with compatriots. Спасибо. Спасибо, мистер председатель. Эти трудные дни для всех нас, но я уверена, что мы выйдем из всех этих с победой. Мы победим, потому что мы保护我们的自由,我们的 независимость и我们的未来, while our adversary is protecting the stolen millions of the Ali family and the offshore accounts and others. So we will win, because we are free, we are honest, and we are consolidated. And while the Ali regime is based on violence, corruption, and hatred of the society, that is why I do not even doubt our victory, despite all those reasons that have been voiced out here. Дорогие компатриоты, мы будем консолидированы и проходить этот трудный вызов. It is very important to stay without any additional emotions. You shall avoid from taking improper actions or behave properly in the social media and follow the quarantine rules. We shall be behaving well balanced, and so that our army can easily be based on us. So that wouldn't be easy, but we will definitely come out with all of this with victory. Long live Artaxh, long live Armenia, and long live our army. We will win. Спасибо, мистер Зольян. Дисингвичд коллеги, заявления закончились. Я бы наверное разделилась от закрытых заявлений, потому что ваши все заявления были закрыты сейчас. Мы голосуем за заявление национальной ассамблеи Республики Аминия, condemning the military aggression unleashed by Azerbaijan against Republic of Artaxh on September 27, 2020. Голосование. 118:0 against. Спасибо, дорогие коллеги, сессия закончилась.